Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. May I have your attention, please? Before we begin this meeting, we ask that everyone silence your cell phones. Before the meeting begins, we ask that everybody silence their cell phones. The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees Meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, audience members may address the board during the designated Audience Item Section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board members, you must provide them to the Board Secretary Jane Kaiser or to me, and we will provide them to the board members. We also ask the members of the audience be respectful of others and remain quiet during the meeting so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if you're asked a question or addressing the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Antiveras. The time is 6:00 PM, and we have the presence of a quorum in this meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been given in the time and manner required by law. We'll begin with the pledges of allegiance led by some students here. If you'll please stand. You may be seated. Our next item of business are recognitions. Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we begin, I would like to recognize the fact that today was a student holiday. Yet, we have many students in the audience tonight, so thank you, students, for getting cleaned up, combing your hair, and taking a shower to come and be with us this evening. If the board will join me in front of the dais, we'll recognize our outstanding students and staff.
Tonight, we are proud to recognize several outstanding students and teachers. First, two Austin High School students were chosen to lead the pledges of allegiance because they exhibit exemplary leadership characteristics among their peers. They consistently model outstanding character attributes in their daily actions at their school. First senior, Jessalyn Susari, is Colonel of the Austin Angels Dance Team. And Junior Tram Nguyen is a cadet lieutenant for the Navy Junior ROTC. And if you're here to support these students, will you please stand to be recognized? I think we have two people in the front row over there. Thank you. Next, the district is recognizing thirty-nine outstanding student musicians selected this year by competitive audition for the All-State Band Choir Orchestra, who performed on February thirteenth at the Texas Music Convention. Students were selected for this honor by participating in a series of rigorous auditions, beginning in September and concluding in January. The final selection to Allstate puts these musicians in the top three percent of all students who auditioned from across the state. Please help us recognize and congratulate these talented Allstate winners and their directors. First, we will recognize the Allstate Band winners. From Austin High School, Ashley Pugh. Will you come forward? Director Bob Christie and Assistant Director Mike Roach. From Clements High School, Eric Lynn. Congre Zoo and Director Daniel Galloway. From Dulles High School, Karen Stevenson. And Director Joe Pruitt. From Elkins High School, Nataniel Farrar and Director Chad Collins. From Kempner High School, Raymond Thompson and Gabriel Macaba. And their Director Scott Norman. From Ridgepoint High School, Ashley Schindlver and Director Andrew Lee. From Travis High School, Brandon Arnett and Director Jehosefet Jamie. Next, we are recognizing the Allstate Choir winners. From Clements High School, Brandon Burgus. And Assistant Director John Richardson. From Dulles High School, we have Suara Mukamala and Director Jennifer Mararo. From Kempner High School, Michaela Rosenthal and Director Pam Hall. From Ridgepoint High School, Josh Sirmiento. Madison Blanco and Director Matthew Coffey. The Allstate Orchestra winners are from Austin High School, Brittany Shaw. Noah Lee. Tiffany Chang. And Director Carolyn Vandiver. From Clements High School, Archer Wang. Becky Wang. Eger To. Hyson Vaughn. Neo Scott. And Timothy Chin. From Dulles High School, Ian Vedder. Sarah Zo. Troy Stevenson. And Director Michael Isador. From Travis High School, Kevin Hupalos. And Director Sabrina Behrens. And will those here to support these talented students please stand so we may recognize Thank you very much.
All right. The next part of our meeting are the audience items. And Mrs. Tosan is needed to time the speakers. She'll have three minutes to address the board. Our first speaker looks maybe like, I can't really read it because it's Ms. Hill, maybe. Corinne, Corrine? Sorry, I can't, it's some of the, Corlette. Some of the letters are blocked out. Thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. You'll have three minutes, and Mrs. Tosan will let you know when you have thirty.
Thank you. I'm Corlette Hill, the Digital Learning Coordinator. The Fort Bend Education Foundation and Schlumberger began supporting computer coding clubs in Fort Bend ISD in 2010. This partnership has made it possible for over one thousand Fort Bend ISD students to explore computer coding and robotics programs, starting at the elementary level before and after school. Initially, we started with four campuses. We have now expanded to twenty-four campuses in the 2015-16 school year. Schlumberger has provided extensive professional development for our specialists, such as the Logo Summer Institute in New York, and equipment to expose students to science, technology, engineering, and math. Schlumberger's investment continues to spark interest and has led to an increased number of Fort Bend ISD high schools offering computer science courses and the expansion of robotics programs at extended day. High school students in upper-level computer science courses at Clements and Dulles volunteer by providing assistance to our middle school students. Our computer coding club students have competed in local, district, and state competitions. The Digital Learning Department has also expanded the number of coding competitions that we offer in the district. We truly appreciate the commitment and dedication of the Fort Bend Education Foundation and Schlumberger for all that they have done to expose our students to STEM-related opportunities. Thank you for inspiring and equipping our students to code. Mark your calendars for May sixth. You're all invited to view computer coding and robotics at our showcase at the annex.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Our next speaker is Brenna Cosby.
Good evening. I'm Brenna Cosby. I'm the Executive Director of the Fort Bend Education Foundation, and first off, I'd like to thank every board member for your volunteer service and time. I know that you takes a lot of your time and dedication, and I appreciate your support for the students and staff here in Fort Bend ISD. I'm following up on Corlette and everything that she had to say about Schlumberger and their dedication. I would like to thank, first, Lynette Meyer, Corlette Hill, and the entire Digital Learning Department for ensuring the success of the coding clubs by providing lesson plans and training to our club sponsors and coaching them on their campuses during club meetings. I am excited to announce that this district-wide coding club program will expand to forty-four clubs beginning this fall. This incredible partnership between the business community, the foundation, and Fort Bend ISD is an innovative approach that creates opportunities to equip and inspire our teachers for years to come. We're going to tell a more extensive story through a video at our Community Partnership luncheon in May, and we would love to take a picture with the board tonight when you break for closed session. Tonight, I'd like for Paula Harris with Schlumberger to stand up, and I'd like to just say thank you before the board to Paula Harris and Schlumberger, because in the past five years, Schlumberger has donated nearly sixteen million dollars to Fort Bend ISD in in-kind and monetary donations. And it all started five years ago, when Clements High School was one of two schools in the nation to pilot a computer science program funded by Schlumberger. And as a follow-up to that, I would like to introduce Lubna Lorena to give you an update on that program at this time.
Good evening, and I'd like to start by saying thank you to Paula. She has made my dreams come true. This isn't a part of my written speech, but she really made my dreams come true and by her support and just continued support over the years. But I would really like to thank, take this opportunity to thank Schlumberger and Paula for all the support they have provided to the Clements Computer Science Program, making it a really successful program and one of the best in the nation. Their grant provided us with Petrel and Ocean software development kits and twenty-five state-of-the-art computers. Since then, Schlumberger engineers and software developers have come and spoken to our kids and inspired them. They have helped them achieve tremendous success through the years. The first group of kids who worked with the Schlumberger engineers and helped develop the softwares are now sophomores in college. These students have worked as interns in their dream companies. By now, they have worked for Microsoft, Google, Facebook, and Square. But the students all attribute their success in attaining these internships to the knowledge and skills they gained when they worked with the Schlumberger mentors and developed plugins for the Petrel software, which is on our campus. So it was really important for the students to gain what they have gained at this stage. But Schlumberger has also arranged for our students to attend technology workshops. These include the three-day camp at University of Houston, the robotics workshop at UT Austin. Talilipad are doing a workshop at Schlumberger. They made it possible for our students to attend a college credit course at University of Houston, dealing with data structures and geosciences. They have provided financial support for our students to compete at various competitions. They have provided us transportation. They have paid for our entry fees. And then they have helped us host our own competition at our campus. We had, our competition was attended by twenty-seven area high schools this year, which was the largest number we have had, we have ever had. I'm proud to say Clements Computer Science Program is really a model program. We have about four hundred and fifty students enrolled in various computer science courses. Clements has a high number of students taking the computer science AP exam, with scores being amongst the best in our nation. We are the state-to-state computer science champions for several years now. Support from industry sponsors is really critical to our success. It inspires the students to do more. They see their relevance to their everyday life and to the applications in industry. It basically inspires and equips our students to imagine and achieve amazing futures, and I would again like to thank Schlumberger and Paula for everything they have done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Lorena, and thank you, Ms. Cosby. And I'd just like to recognize and thank Paula Harris. Not only is she representing Schlumberger tonight, but she's a former trustee from HISD, so thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate all you do for schools and for public education in the state of Texas. Thank you so much. Our next speaker tonight is Janine Holliday.
Good evening, Fort Bend ISD trustees, Dr. Dupree, and fellow stakeholders. My name is Janine Holliday, and I serve as an eighth-grade math teacher and teen leadership instructor at Missouri City Middle School. Go Cougars! I also serve as a captain in the United States Army Reserve as a Judge Advocate General. And during my last time on duty, which was short notice, I had the opportunity to reflect on how blessed I am to serve as a teacher in this school district. This is absolutely an amazing school district, and that is extremely supportive of those who are in the service. I also reflective on, I was also reflective on how supportive Mrs. Cameraman has been to me on the many stints that I have done this year on short notice, because there's a lot going on. And so I had the opportunity to nominate her for a Patriot Award, which one. I reflected on how thoughtful, flexible, and supportive she is when they say, Holliday, we need you to come and serve for a week, or we need you to come and serve for two weeks. And so I'm going to read to you the award and the message that comes from the Secretary of Defense. "From the Department of Defense, Office of the Assistant Secretary of Defense for Reserve Affairs, Texas Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. Dear Jerry, On behalf of the Secretary of Defense and our Committee for the Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve, I commend you for supporting the men and women serving in our nation's reserve components. We recognize the strain and sacrifices employers are making when their employees are called to active military service and appreciate your sacrifice. Captain Janine Holliday nominated you for the Department of Defense Patriotic Employer Award in recognition of your cooperation and support. It is a distinct pleasure to award this award with our special congratulations for your commitment and loyalty to her. Thanks for your support to the men and women serving in the reserve components. Sincerely, Eddie M. Spurgeon, Chairman, Texas ESGR."
And I have one more. I want to say thank you to Ms. Holliday for all of her support and giving her time also to our country and her service to our country.
This is my father-in-law, Mr. Holliday, and we were talking about the many improvements and changes that Ms. Cameraman has been working to Missouri City Middle School. She has effectuated positive change and increased morale and climate over the past two years at the school that I've worked there. Congresswoman Green could not be here today, however, Mr. Holliday is his congressional community liaison, and he would like to present this award to you as well. "The certificate of special congressional recognition presented to Jerry Cameraman in honor of your service to the community. On behalf of the constituents of the ninth Congressional District of Texas, I salute your commitment to supporting our military and their families, as well as inspiring students through continuing education programs with the Fort Bend Independent School District."
I think I'm a little speechless for once. I just want to say thank you. I do what I do because I love what I do, and I do it with great people who support me. Can I say, I want to say thank you to the guys who showed up for our Project Manhood tonight to support me. I really appreciate them and their sponsors. And I want to say thanks to my husband for always being there, and Dr. Joe Schultz, one of my new APs, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mrs. Cameraman, for being here tonight, and thank you, Ms. Holliday, for bringing that award to us, those awards to us. All right, so, Dr. Dupree, we're on to information.
All right. We have two items tonight. The first one is Dr. Deena Hill, is our Executive Director of Special Education, is going to provide an update on our work to review and improve the delivery of special education services to students in Fort Bend.
Let me get set up here. Well, good evening. Good evening. Is it on? There we go. Okay. Good evening, President James, Dr. Dupree, and Board of Trustees. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Before we get started, there's a couple of things I wanted to do, and one was introduce some of my team who's here tonight, and I could not do this job without them. So, we have Michelle LaBleu over here, our Special Education Director. Michelle, wave. Nicole, 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 stand up. You might even want to stand on the chair. And Christina, Christina Ritter. And Christina and Nicole are our Assistant Directors. And of course, Lepita Garcia, who has been supportive, and Dr. Hill are here as well. And so, I wanted to just recognize them and thank you for all you do every day for kids and for Fort Bend ISD. And then also, this is the first time that I have had the opportunity to address the board. I started here, I want to say, gosh, June first, and it has been a whirlwind, and it's been a good whirlwind, but I haven't had a chance to really talk with you and just kind of give you a little bit of information about me and my philosophy as a special education leader and as an administrator and really just as an advocate for children. And so, before we get started with the presentation, I just wanted to talk about, you know, my beliefs, and particularly about early intervention. And this isn't in the handout, but just, I think it's so important that we work very hard to intervene early with students, and if we can do the right quality intervention at an early age, the outcomes that we find for students is enormous. Oftentimes, we are catching up on the back end because we don't get in there early enough. And the research and what we've learned over the last ten years about early intervention has given us so much information that now we know what to do, so it's our job to do that. And so I think early intervention is critical. The other thing that I want to talk about is quality special education services. You know, we have a lot of teachers, paraprofessionals, school administrators that love our kids, and that, I have been out on campuses and I have seen that love. But we need more than that if we want to really help special ed students, if we want to really help them reach their potential. We need those quality services. And so, when we talk tonight, I'll talk, you know, some about the quality services, what those look like, and what we need to do as leaders to give our teachers and our campus staff the tools and the training and the services to be able to provide those quality services. I think it's really important that we establish relationships with not only our campus staff, our campus administrators, our principals, but our parents. We are, we are the experts, and parents look to us for the expert, for experts for research, but our parents are the expert on their child. And so, we have to learn to work with parents, we have to learn to collaborate with parents, and really listen as we're developing programs and services for students. And then you'll hear me talk a lot about an inclusive service delivery model. And so, what does that mean? You know, I believe in inclusion, and inclusion means that we want to always consider services for students in the general education setting first. We will always have students who need to be pulled out of that general ed setting for short amounts of time, and maybe for even longer amounts of time, depending on their needs. But we need to think of students as students that are general education students first, instead of special education students. And so, you know, my philosophy on inclusion is that we need to be individualized, and we need to think about what students need as we're developing services. So that's just a little bit about me before we get started tonight. And so, I wanted to just, if you remember, back on May eighteenth, the board, Dr. Garcia, presented a report about the state of special education at that time, and you were provided with a copy of that report, and I think for those of you who've joined the board since then, you may have received that as well. So during, in that report, the team identified nine priority goals that we needed to do and work on as we go forward with our strategic plan and developing services to enhance and improve special education services in Fort Bend. And so I'm going to talk tonight about where we are on those nine goals since that report in May. One of the things that is unique about special education is that we don't, we can't do this alone, okay? We don't operate in silos, or I should say, it's not unique. We don't operate in silos. And so you'll see throughout the report and throughout some of the discussion tonight is the need to collaborate. And so, one of the, the very first goal that was identified in the report was the need to have district-wide systems of multi-tiered academic and behavior supports. And so, you've heard over the last couple of months, I know that you heard Michael Ewing talk about RTI and the work we're doing there in the, in the, in his department. We've talked and heard about interventions needed and specialized research, research-based programs needed. What we have done with goal, with goal one since, I guess, since June is we've really streamlined and clarified, clarified some of the services or the systems. The RTI, it's been a little bit difficult to maneuver and Michael Ewing has been working on that, but one of the things that we know with RTI is that if we don't have good RTI systems in place, that sometimes students get lost in the process. Students that need help don't get referred for the appropriate services they need and we have identified that that's a problem that we have here in Fort Bend. And so I'm going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. The other thing was the need to have equi, to make sure that our interventions and our programs and our services are equitably distributed across campuses. So we shouldn't go to one campus and see a service because, because it's at that, because it's at that campus and not see it at another campus if students need that. So we've been working on that and then as far as aligning our guidelines with state and federal laws, we have developed a special education procedural guideline book. And that is important because we heard a lot in the report, also in the curriculum audit of the need to have systems in place and for people to know, you know, where to go to find information if they didn't know how to implement something. And so, we've been working on that. The other thing is just reorganizing our central education department and really helping redefine our role as coordinators and facilitators to make sure that our coordinators are knowledgeable of curriculum. If they aren't knowledgeable of curriculum, that how can we help them learn in that area? And also, as far as coaching and leadership and all of the increased, the, the need to increase accountability for our staff. And so we've been working in that area as well. Okay, when I talked a little bit about our, one of the problems that we identified and I'll refer to this as child fine, that is a term under the, the special education laws, but basically, it's our responsibility as the school district to find children that may have a disability, okay? That's our responsibility. It's not a parent's responsibility to come to us and say, "My child, my child has a disability." Certainly, we want parents to do that, but ultimately, it's our, it's our responsibility. And so we do that by looking at data, we look at students, how they're performing in school, we look at all kinds of, whether it's, you know, behavior, academics, communication, and we look at all of those things. And in Fort Bend, the overall identification for special education students right now is at 6.6%, okay? So this is extremely low compared to the regional and state averages and certainly, Texas is lower than the, the whole country. So I won't compare us to other states, but in, in, in Texas, most districts are between eight and 10%. Even some are now starting to get back up a little higher than 10 again. So 6.6 is pretty low, okay? So if you look at this slide here, this is all of our students that are currently served with special education services and it is by their primary, primary disability. So you can see here, our biggest areas of need are other health impairment at 20.8%, autism at 19.8% and learning disability at 18 point, at 18%. Most districts, learning disability as a primary disability is in the 30% range. So what that means is that we are missing some students because we talked about we should probably be around 8% or so, maybe 8.5. That's, I think when I crunched the numbers, it was like anywhere between 1,200 and 1,600 students that we needed to find and see and evaluate for special education services to, to be in line with other districts. So learning disability is an area that we are low and speech impairment also. Typically, we would have 30 to 35% of our students would be identified as a learning disability and speech impairment is anywhere between 20 and 30%. So as you can see, the students that we are serving in Fort Bend and for special education services are students with much more, with much more needs, students that have mild disabilities somehow or another, we're not identifying them. So when we go to the next slide here, and I'll talk a little bit later in the, in the presentation about some of the things we're doing in that area. So the second goal was, you know, making sure that we have a full array of quality services that are equitably distributed. And so I talked a little bit when I, when I first started, but changing the mindset from special education services being seen as programs and places to services and supports. That is not a mindset changed any different than, than, than other districts. This is, this is something that we need to work on all together. So, but in Fort Bend, I think that we are much more, we're much more used to saying programs and being program-driven than service-driven. And that was something that was identified in the report back in May. So as we look at our, how we can make sure we have quality services, we have been reviewing all of our program sites, our, our cluster sites, such as, I think that you're familiar with some of those sites such as, you know, ABC and Life Skills. These are specialized programs for students with unique disabilities and unique needs. So we want to review those, those, those programs and those services and determine, are there better ways to serve students? Should we do, should, bless you, should we do that in a different way and really look at being more in a community as opposed to, you know, you might go to this program over here for K through 2, then you go over here for 3 through 4, I mean, 3 through 5, then you go back over here for, for middle school. And so there's a lot of moves. So we've been working and collaborating with the Chief of Staff and Operations and, and looking at enrollment and boundary changes and trying to look more long-term as we develop services, talking about what do these services look like and, and are we in line with best practice? The other thing that we've been doing is just really trying to increase our walkthroughs, our learning walks, our collaboration with the Teacher Development Department with really trying to make sure when we go into a classroom and we see what's going on in a specialized setting, does this have to be done in that specialized setting? Or are we doing the same thing in, that is, that's going on in general ed, but going, doing it slower in a specialized setting? Because if that's happening, we are never going to catch our students up that are receiving special ed services. So there's been a lot of collaboration also with the accountability and the SIS departments to make sure that we have data on ethnicity and special populations readily available. We want to be transparent about issues related to ethnicity and have those discussions. It's not a new fact that we have had disproportionality issues in, in that we have over-identified students with, with African-American students with disabilities in Fort Bend. So on the next slide, you will see this, you'll see all, all students in the district and then you'll see identified special education students. And so with this slide, you can clearly see the over-identification in the area of African-American, under-identification in the area of Asian, Hispanic and white are, you know, pretty right on. So when you see, when you see data like this, it, it makes you need to ask more and gather more information and look at trends and figure out, is there something that we're doing as a school district that we can do differently? What is going on here? So that's what we've been doing here with this slide. And then, when you go to the next slide, it's a little busy and I hesitated showing you this, but I think it's an important slide. And let me see if I can get this to go on right. Is it on? I probably turned it off. Thank you, okay. Okay, so I want to show you what this is up here. So this, uh-huh.
Yeah, pointy.
Oh, sorry about that. So what this is here is, this is all of the students currently identified in Fort Bend with special ed services, okay? But we've broken, we've broken it up by ethnicity and by primary disability. So let me give you an example here, okay? This, let's look at this green line here as it goes across. So that is probably, the green line up there is learning disabled. So remember how we talked about learning disabled was about 18% or so? So that would be the green line. Well, as you can see then, when you look at our African-American population of students, they are, we're not under-identifying African-Americans as learning disabled. They're, in fact, they're a little bit over-identified, okay? When you look at our Asian population though, see the green here, very under-identified with learning disabilities. So if we were trying to figure out, who are we missing to identify more kids as learning disabled, we would want to ask ourselves, is there something going on in the Asian population that we need to look deeper into? And is it something that we're doing? Is it something, you know, we, we don't know? And so, you can see here how this works, Hispanic, we're a little over-identify with learning disability. And then you can see why we are under-identified in learning disability. What I think will stand out to you immediately is you see, and if you, if you see how this chart works now, is that you see our Asian population is, you know, very much over-identified in the area of autism. So, you know, looking at data and looking at it in different ways and, and looking at it by ethnicity is an important thing to do. Not only is it important thing for us to do, but for us to discuss and share with our campus administrators so that when we have discussions, we can talk about, are we, are we missing kids? Is this a cultural diversity issue? Is there, you know, is there something we can learn and do differently? And so that's what we're doing right now as we go forward and really try to learn more on the child fine issue and see, are we, are we missing students? Okay, so number, the, the third goal was, you know, the need to, our instructional quality that narrows the achievement gap. And so, I've talked a little bit tonight already, but, you know, we have really collaborated with the CNI Department, with Teacher Development, with special programs, working on, on things you've already heard about like differentiated instruction and really focusing on increasing our general education teachers' knowledge in the area of differentiated instruction. We've been collaborating with CNI, you know, to identify tools and resources that we can assist teachers with so that when they plan lessons and scaffold instruction, that they have what they need. And really just increasing our staff development all over for teachers, special education teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, and parents. The next slide, number four, is about being, you know, proactive and responsive behavioral support systems. And so, again, you heard, you know, you heard Michael Ewing talk on, from the At-Risk Department and they are really taking the lead on the RTI for behavior, but we're also collaborating with, with his department as well as the Talent Management Department because really making sure with cultural awareness discussions, are we, again, that goes back to that over-identification of African-American and diversity and being inclusive. We've also been talking about, you know, the development of a parent center and what that would look like to include parent training, having an intake center where we would have parents come in and we would evaluate students, early, early childhood students prior to their third birthday and then really trying to reinforce that family-community partnership there and seeing, and we think that that would be a good way to make some initial relationship with parents. And as far as inclusion and diversity, you know, we're also talking about disability awareness. So we've, we've, you know, we have some programs in the district like Meet in the Middle, which is a Special Olympics program that really promotes collaboration between non-disabled students and disabled students. And so we want to do more of that. We've, we've heard from our parents, we've heard from our schools that we need more of that. All right, and goal five is really about more of the inclusive practices. So this is individualizing our inclusive practices. And we've really started having discussions this year about co-teach and I, I think that you've heard us talk, or heard me mention this earlier in the year. And so, we started this through Phase 1 in the fall when we just started talking about co-teach, talking with campus administrators, talking with parents and really started gathering data on what would it look like if we moved to a co-teach model. Phase 2, which is the spring, is just the, the blueprint. We have, I'll talk about staffing in a second, but we, you know, using all of our data to determine what would our budget needs be like, how would we prioritize campuses, looking at co-teach models, training. And then ultimately, Phase 3 would be an implementation where we would start co-teaching at campuses. We know and the research says that students that are served in the general education classroom have better outcomes for the most part and so that's what we want to move to. And then of course, creating that common vocabulary so that when we say in-class support or specialized support or external support, that we're all talking the same language. Number 6 is, we talked about the, the valued parent-school partnerships. And so, we have really been working hard here in this area. We redesigned our parent education programs and so our, the, the team that's here tonight, myself and our director and two assistant directors are at every one of those meetings every month and in the past, they were run differently. And we just think it's important for us to be out there, to be connecting with parents and to be available. We also established a special education advisory committee, which was something that the, that the report recommended and we refer to that as CPAC. And this year, we, we established it a little bit late and so we only met, we're meeting three times this year, but we're going to meet more frequently next year. Not monthly, they want to meet monthly, but I, I told them I don't think we can get monthly in. But, but it's really a great group of parents and we're learning a lot from them and they're bringing information to us. We've also restructured some of our special education meetings and, and really just in, you know, trying to get communication out through principals, newsletters and through our monthly meetings and just trying to have a consistent message. And that's very challenging in a large district to have a consistent message. So we recognize the value of the parent-school partnership and we've been working on that. And then goal number seven is the student-centered staffing process. So I want to talk a little bit about this because this is, was recommended in the report and this, this will end up, you know, having budget implications. So it's, it's something that I know you all want to be aware of what it is. But instead of having ratios for students and instead of having, you know, saying that if you're a student who, who receives resource services, a ratio for students in this area is, is, you know, like 12 students to one adult. The, the student-centered staffing process is where you actually consider the individual student, you look at their needs and you really start to focus on, should we serve this student in the general ed setting with supports or in a specialized setting? And you go through this process and so then you get an individualized recommendation. So we have done that for every single, every campus has been asked to do that process for students being served in the general ed setting or in resource, okay? That was kind of our first phase. We have gathered that data and have some initial recommendations and ideas of what we might need to move to a co-teach model for the fall. And so Phase 3, which is, you know, later in the spring, once we are able to go through this budget process, then we would need to, you know, to go to ARD and individually talk about this because of course, these are only recommendations. Ultimately, the ARD committee makes the decision about Ultimately, the ARD committee makes the decision about students' needs. So that was seven. Okay, and eight is really just talking about increasing accountability for effective and efficient use of personnel. So we've, we've visited our job descriptions, we've clarified roles, we have some plans to reallocate positions and staff. And really looking at, are there ineffective practices that we can eliminate? Are there ways that we can save money as we're asking for more, for more positions? And, and then really collaborating with human resources on recruiting and compensation reviews to make sure that we can get the right people here to work with us. And the last goal, goal number nine, is really talking about compliant practices and streamlined paperwork. And we want to be compliant. We know that Fort Ben had been under the gun for issues related to compliance in the special education area. And so we've been working on that. We, we, you know, we really want to do what's right for kids and we want to have quality services, but compliance continues to be important. And so we have really increased some of the, the things that we do in our office as far as conducting compliance reviews. But we've also created a locally developed campus report card, special education report card that we did in collaboration with the accountability department. And I think you have an example of that. And so principals will receive that every nine weeks. They'll be able to see kind of on a dashboard, where are they in relation to some of these compliance indicators that TEA requires us to have? And so having that data available and not just discussing it once a year or twice a year when we're under the gun for some of the things that we've done wrong, I think will also help us move. Some of the things that we've already seen is that in the area of LRE, so serving students in least restrictive environments, we're already making progress. Our data indicates that. And then certainly our out-of-school suspensions really have come down for students with disabilities. So you can tell by looking at the data that our campuses are really working hard on some of those issues. So our future plans, obviously, we want to take these, this report and back to some various stakeholders. We talked about our, our parent group, our CPAC group, want to share it with them. Initially during the report in May, there was a core team identified. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, click, okay. Okay, here we go, thanks. There was a core team identified and we want to go back to that core team and really share this information with them and see, you know, what do they think? Are we on track? And then of course, we need to continue to implement our strategic plan, our PBMAS corrective actions and our departmental plan. So that was, that's kind of the result of the last seven months. And I know that was quick, but there will be lots more to come in the future. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, thank you, Dr. Hill. It was quick, but it was very informative and coupled with your very nice, very well-written report. It was easy to follow along what you had to tell us, so thank you very much. And thanks for all the effort to you and your team that went into writing this because it was very well done. So thank you. I'm sure we have some questions or comments. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I think when we were last presented with, with this, a year ago, I guess it was, last May, one of the things that, that really stuck out was the lack of consistency or perhaps a lack of consistency amongst the diagnostics and identifying. So have you addressed that? Is that still perhaps part of the problem with the either over or, or under identification of, of some of these folks and students?
Yes.
And what, what, what really have you done to?
Well, and so, you know, that's a collaboration with the at-risk department. But as far as our, our special ed department, specifically our evaluation team, and I think that's who you're referring to when you talk about our diagnosticians, our licensed school psychologists and, and speech-language pathologists. We have, we've created an initial, an initial evaluation team and identified that in the report. And basically, all initial special education evaluations are completed by these team members. So there's a core team. They also then send that, that report through a peer review to look at the quality of the report. We have already found that since we started doing that this year, that we have reports because you have to understand, you know, these evaluators get training and they, but they change the way these test batteries are. And so then sometimes it's hard for them to understand how to interpret. And so having that peer review has really helped us. And we're already seeing the quality of our evaluations improve. We have a long ways to go, we do. But I think that's been helpful. And then of course, the collaboration with the, you know, the, the at-risk department and, and really identifying, are there kids out there that, that we've missed? And we are, and we are working on that too, just identifying, looking at students at campuses and looking at some indicators. And, and if they're not being served by 504 or special ed and they've, you know, had several fails, you know, failures in different areas or disciplines, saying, what's going on here? So we are working on that.
And then I, I find that, that one chart that highlights the autism amongst Asian, that's, that's just fascinating to me. Any explanation, I mean?
Well, I, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know. I know that it seems like, and of course, I'm new to Fort Ben, but it seems like we have a large pocket of Asian community and I think that they are very close. So I think that when they, I, you know, when we have parents that are moving here from overseas, we get a lot of calls from parents that say, we're moving here and we want to be somewhere where we can be supported by other community members, you know, perhaps that are Asian as well and, and have that collaboration, that support. It's, there's, I've seen it in other districts as well. And so you, you often see an under identification of learning disability and an over identification of autism. But we, as in Fort Ben, just have such a diverse population, I can't really tell you yet. I mean, and, and we may never know. But those are the things that we're looking at and digging deeper to try to understand our data.
Thank you.
Ms. Helliger?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Hill. I just wanted to add a little bit to what Mr. Rosenthal stated. When you stated earlier about the indicators of, that it's our responsibility as a district to find out whether or not our children have a disability or not. What kind of indicators are, are we looking at truly? Is it just the raw data that comes in every so, so, you know, so many months, at the end of the year? What kind of indicators are, are teachers being provided some support? Because they're the ones that actually are working with our children day in and day out. And I know that sometimes when some of our services like 504 and, and, and special education, unless you are identified in those particular services, with those particular ser, for those particular services, you can't get certain things like help with reduced choices for your test taking. You can't get quiet time unless it's actually sit on your ART list that says that you can do those things. And sometimes we don't need necessarily an indicator that you have 504, just the fact that we're, we have different students that need different things, there are services within our classroom, then they don't necessarily need that particular identifier to say, hey, let me take, and you know what, little Johnny needs X, Y, and Z. Why can I, I not provide that? And I think that goes hand in hand with the table that you showed concerning the diversity, the African-American population that is over identified. The Asian population is also over identified. And it goes hand in hand with what, how we are bracing cultural diversity in those campuses and those schools. I mean, this is one-on-one to me. And I know personally, when my child needed help and services, he was considered learning disab, disab, dis, learning disability other. And we really don't know, still don't know what other really means. And so for about a year and a half, they had, he had learning disability services for other, which you really can't identify what other is. And it wasn't until I said, this is not working, and you did not see any type of results with my child, that I say, ask our district to do additional testing. At that time, I said, you know what, I think my son is dyslexic. So he went from learning disability, learning disabled to dyslexia, dyslexia classes. And you saw his immediate turnaround in his reading ability and his skills because he was in the proper classes and, and receiving the proper services. So it's important for me, as we move forward with your future plans, is understand what those indicators really are, understand the type of diversity sensitivity that we're having at certain campuses, certain schools, and with certain ethnic groups as we move forward with your future plans. Because it's important for us that we give our children the right services.
Well, and I, and I totally agree with you. And I think, you know, the very first part of fixing something is to admit that, that there's a problem. And so we have, looking at our data and saying that we have some work to do, having, you know, discussions about ethnicity and diversity, it's, it's something that we need to be having all the time. You talked about, you know, your child, your own child with, with a learning disability. And, and, you know, about fifty percent of students with a learning disability, their area of, of concern is in reading. And so one of the things that I know that I put in this report, I didn't really talk about it too much, is that, you know, what kind of programming and services do we have for our students that are identified as, with special ed services for reading? Because just like you talked about, you give a child the right kind of methodology and intervention and bam, you saw, he responded. And so we, we need to be doing that, you know, for students served under special ed by giving our teachers the right training and, and tools to, you know, to, to be able to serve students. We do that under RTI. We talked last week even about some of the, the, you know, interventions under the LLI and some of the, the need for more research-based intervention. So we are working on that. I think a lot of the indicators that you, you want to know about are, are some hard data, but it's off the soft data too, you know? So we're looking at not only how are our students performing in the classroom academically, we're looking at writing samples, we're looking at some of our district assessments and just teacher assessments, but we're also looking at students who aren't talking, who aren't acting out. And I'm afraid those are the students that we're missing. Students with, with, with those milder disabilities. And then when it comes to diversity and cultural awareness, are we jumping too quickly in certain areas, you know, our African-American population? And, and thinking that that is some type of disability and it's just a culture difference? So those are the questions that I have as a new director and looking at the data. And I think it's just going to take us working really hard collaboratively with all these different departments and, and, you know, making our goals and sticking with it to improve the services and to, especially in that child find area.
Thank you. You have any other questions? Ms. Tossan?
So I'm going to just continue on that a little bit because I, she stole a little bit of my question. And, and, and I think, so digging into it just a little bit more because part of my question was, we're under identifying as a whole, but we're over identifying in the African-American population. So I, I, part of my question was going to be, are we digging in a little bit more to figure out why? Number one. And number two, we've had a discussion in here last year before Ms. Helliger got on the board about our response to intervention, about RTI and how we're implementing that in this district or not implementing that in this district. And so my question is, which is a little bit also of an opinion, is I feel like if we do a better job of implementing RTI in the district, that it may flesh out some of that a little bit of why, if we're doing, if we're implementing RTI properly, particularly in the African-American population, if we're getting those interventions right, then maybe we're not having to identify versus in other areas where we're maybe doing RTI a little bit too long instead of identifying those students as eligible. But I'd like to see what you think, as I know this is the first year we've really had kind of RTI training and implementation district-wide, and what is your data showing you?
Well, I mean, I think that we have a problem with our RTI and, and we know that. And I know that we, we've brought in a consultant, you know, I'm working with Michael Ewing's office too and we're talking and we're having collaborative meetings. You know, RTI, I think, you know, was about ten years ago, fifteen years ago when this topic came up. And it's been really hard because I think what happens to teachers in the classroom is that they want to help kids and they don't know exactly what to do. And then they think they should refer students. And then they're told, no, you don't have enough of this or that. And so then they don't refer them. And then they, and then they wait too long, the students start to fail. And then we tell them, you're waiting too long, why aren't you referring them? But I will tell you, it's not unique to Fort Ben. RTI has been, it's been a difficult, I guess, process to implement. But it works if you do it right. And so where you see RTI and you see, you know, the, the tiers being implemented effectively and the collaboration at the campus level and talking about data and really knowing students and talking about interventions and, and doing the interventions with validity. I mean, you're, you're seeing good results. So I know that RTI works, we just have to make it easy for teachers to understand and easy for teachers to, to document because I think that that's really hard. I mean, they're responsible for twenty, you know, twenty to thirty kids. And then on top of that, having to document all this information and, and trying to learn different interventions, it's difficult. So that, I think our job is giving teachers the tools to do that in a way that's easiest for them, is to provide that training for administrators, our, our campus staff. And I do think that that will help with some of our over identification and specifically our under identification. Now, we did look at, I mean, when I first got here, we did look at some of the, they had, they had already been starting to look at some of the, the data on, the data on the over identification. And there are students that are transferring in to our district, African-American students, that are already identified. So, you know, we're not going to say, you know, stay out, we are over identified. No, we're going to welcome those students. But sometimes we look and we do a reevaluation and maybe in the previous district, they were identified improperly. And so then you have to think about, you know, do you take away services that a student, maybe that student's been sitting his whole life in resource and they're in high school? And, and, you know, we have to think about doing what's right for kids. So sometimes we can't just do an evaluation and, and dismiss them. I mean, there's just, there's, it's, there's a lot of things that have to be considered. So we have been looking, when you look at other health impairment and you know that that's the highest disability area in our district, it's pretty shocking to me. It should not be that. And that is probably due to ADHD and it's probably due to parents saying, my student needs help, they're having learning problems, I don't think I can get it. So I go to the doctor and the doctor gives me, or, you know, a, a written script that says I have ADHD and I bring it and I get into special ed faster. And, and I think that we need to really start doing evaluations in a way that we make sure when we say a student is other health impaired, that we have other data. Because I bet some of those students are really learning disabled.
Well, and I think that goes back to her question about, so how are we training our teachers on those indicators? I mean, how are we going to send in coaches? Are we going to use our coordinators for that? Because, I mean, as you know, there are indicators, there are things that teachers can look for. And then you have to make the determination, are we going to use RTI? Are we going to evaluate for special ed? Is this a 504 umbrella? I mean, it's, it's very complicated, so I really get it for our teachers. But, so how are we training them to see that, those indicators?
Well, and, and, and I'll, and I'll step into the at-risk department for a minute and just talk. I know Michael Ewing talked a, a couple of weeks back, or maybe it's been a couple of months now. But we, you know, a, a good practice is to have your screenings. So you, you will either have two screenings a year or three screenings a year. And so you're looking at indicators for students. And so once you screen in the academic area, like for example, you might be screening, you know, phonemic awareness, comprehension. You might be screaming, screening in the behavior area. So you're looking at students that have X amount of discipline referrals. I mean, you're doing some screening to see where are these students? And what are we doing as far as the tiers? And so that training and that approach is, is being, I think Michael piloted with twenty, twenty campuses? Eight campuses? So, and bringing in eleven more next year. So the training has been provided to all campus administrators, to, to team leads. But they're really focusing on a small group of, a piloted group of campuses with the- with the idea to expand that for next year. And our diagnosticians, our licensed school psychologists, all of those groups are constantly talking about child find and when to refer. And I think that we just have to all be on the same page. And we haven't fixed it yet. I mean, we are working on it, so we still have a ways to go.
I have other questions that I'm going to send you in an email.
Okay.
Because they're specific to like timelines and disability awareness and that kind of thing. But I did want to say, especially while we're discussing this, that there were many, many things in this report that I appreciated seeing. There's lots of progress and lots of good things, I think, from not just a board perspective, but from a parent perspective. And my hope is that there are more in the district that are feeling these changes and seeing these changes and seeing them benefit their kids. I have been asking and I'm getting some positive feedback. So I wanted to share that with you guys. And I really appreciate the hard work that I know you and your team have been doing and the at-risk team has been doing. And so thank you for that. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. George?
First of all, I greatly appreciate the report. And I see that there is a lot of good words I like to hear, equitable distribution, which is important, and also changing the mindset. And I think we are, we are in the right direction. And also I see that on that report, page number five, showing that a 50% increase in identifying children in 2014, 15 to 1516.
Yes.
Can you explain, is that all of a sudden we are paying attention or what happened there?
And that's a result, I didn't really highlight that on the slides, but that's, that's a result of what we've been doing this summer is really talking about how we are under-identifying students, trying to streamline the RTI paperwork and the work with Michael Ewing's department. And so we have doubled the amount of initial referrals this fall compared to last fall. So we are getting those students referred. And now we're trying to evaluate those students as quickly as we can because we just are dealing with the same amount of staff as we did last year. So, and, but that work is, is a direct result of conversations, of training. I'm very pleased to see that that number has changed. If, with all the work we've been doing and the talking and the RTI and everything we've been doing, if we had not seen more initial referrals, then I think we would have a problem. But we're heading in the right direction and I expect to see more.
Okay, I greatly appreciate that. I'm sure my colleagues appreciate that and also the parents and the community appreciate that. We are identifying more of our children and giving them special care. And I think, I just simply wanted to say, I mean, you know, when we go to the community and we hear all the time, parents frustration and, you know, like, you know, especially special ed parents, you know. And we are going in the right direction, I believe. And, you know, there's a lot of things. And we are fortunate to have a couple of our board members, our parents. So, I mean, they understand these things maybe much better than I do. And they're taking a lead on it. And obviously, we are taking a lead on it, it'll look like. And also, last thing I wanted to ask is that, we talk about a special ed report card. Do we have that in existence or we are in the process of making it or?
We did create it. And I believe there is an example in your report in the appendix. So I gave you, we've already created them. And so every nine weeks, there'll be a district report and then each campus will receive a report. So what I believe you have is an example of the nine-weeks district report. And so, yes, that's already started. What we plan to do with that now is that our special education team in collaboration with the Department of School Leadership will be going out to campuses, talking with campuses, particularly campuses that are struggling a little bit more, and creating a coordinated support plan to say, you know, here's what your data looks like. Tell us what you're doing, what can we do, what can CNI do? What can the school, you know, Department of School Leadership? And really trying to have a, more of a collaborative effort as we help them improve and move their data. And so that's been a new process. So we just started it. We principals received all of their report cards about three weeks ago. And so that's been something that is new over the last, you know, working with the accountability department to create that.
I greatly appreciate your effort and your team. And I'm so thankful we are, we are moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? I have a, just a question or comment. I think some of my colleagues have brought up a couple of things that I had on my mind. One was the identification issue. So I like the, your philosophy of early intervention and early identification. I think in the past, we had a history of sort of thinking, let's see if these things work themselves out. And that, that isn't helpful for kids. And of course, we're very student-centered, so we want to be identifying early. Another thing that I read about that I really liked and my colleagues alluded to it was the collaboration. Because, and I think you said it best, you know, administrators and teachers may be experts in education and the parents are experts in the child. And so together, we can figure out the best plan for the child going forward. And I, I like that spirit. And I saw a lot of examples of collaboration in the report. One thing you didn't touch on today, though, that I thought maybe we should just mention was the discipline data and some of the over-disciplining of special ed students. And I noticed you gave us some data saying that that was looking a little bit better, but maybe you could speak to that for a moment if you would.
Well, and it's actually looking significantly better. Now, it's early in the year and we have, and so, because, you know, a lot of the discipline, you start to see an increase as the year goes on. But I will tell you that we are not suspending students with disabilities and we are not sending them to the in-class support nearly as much as we were. In fact, in the PBMAS reporting, you know, you are given a zero, one, two, or three. And a three is the worst grade. And when we ran our discipline report, we were zero. So that's how, that's how far we've moved.
Is that from the first semester, then? Is this data?
That was from, we ran it at the end of the first semester. Uh-huh, I think it was as of January 4th. So I think we're doing amazing things. And I, and I, and I say "we" because it's definitely a collaborative effort. Our principals, our assistant principals, our counselors, our special ed folks out there, the restorative justice efforts at the middle school, the positive behavior support initiatives with the foundations program and the CHAMPs and all of these things, I think, are coming together and we're seeing some results. And I think that also those difficult conversations of, we're not going to do this anymore. And I, and I say that we have that from our leadership, you know. And so we will be running, we are running that data all the time. We have, actually, I want to say I get weekly reports on that. But we are definitely seeing progress and I'm very pleased with the work the campuses are doing in that area.
It occurs to me, related to something Ms. Helliger said, is that identifying the child's disability accurately can make them more successful in the classroom and less of a discipline problem. So sometimes that might be the root of the situation. And I'm sure you all have discussed that and thought about that because we have to get the basics right. And the kids don't know how to express that, what you're, how you're trying to help them isn't really helping them. And so, and so poor behavior sometimes, since they don't have the words, they act out. And I recognize that as a parent, so.
Absolutely.
So anyhow, that's, that's good. And thank you for working so hard on all of this. We appreciate it and thank you again, as I said, for a very nice report and presentation tonight.
Well, thank you. And thank you for allowing me to serve the district and the parents and especially the students. So we appreciate all your support. I have never been in a district with so much support from the board and from leadership above me to improve special education services. So I commend you for, you know, and Dr. Dupree for making that a targeted area. So thank you.
Well, thank you. When we say all students, we are committed to every single student. So we, and we recognize that, we appreciate your efforts and your help with that. Next up is a budget update, but I'd like to maybe suggest that we move on to, we do our closed session, go into closed session before we do the budget update. Would that be all right, Dr. Dupree?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so the board is now going to convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meeting Act for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney as well as for personnel matters. The board's now convening in closed session.